Mr. Boath?
Here.
Mrs. Boyle? Mrs. Farinella? Mrs. Giannakis?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Penner?
Here.
Mr. Hasselberg? Mr. Cassio?
Yeah.
Mr. Chapman? In accordance with the terms of the Sunshine Law, add a good notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, borough clerk's office, police headquarters, public library, four newspapers, and tapped into on January 6, 2022. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices in pursuit of disharmony policy 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes duration and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic.
Yeah. We did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chapman?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay, I'm here too, and I'm Mr. Chapman. Let's move on. Yeah, you did. Yeah, you did. Uh, Chapman, additions and deletions? Any comments from the public on proposed resolutions? Okay, could I please have a motion?
Motion.
The...
Thank you.
It's a really nice question.
We got the answers.
Yeah.
We got the answers.
Questions for comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Penner?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Uh, super kind of support.
Thank you, Mr. Panisi. Mr. Waylon, do you mind joining us at the podium? Uh, Mr. Waylon is walking up. Congratulations to all of our high school students in the oral English program being drafted into the French, Spanish, and Italian honor societies this evening. All of the students have met very rigorous criteria for this prestigious honor, so congratulations to all of our students. This evening, we have the pleasure of enjoying a presentation from a number of our South Bend Middle School students. Principal Leo Waylon is with us here this evening. He is going to introduce the students, the faculty, and tell us all about the program.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, I'd like to present to you tonight an example of project-based learning, which we do from time to time at the middle school in our classrooms. Project-based learning, teaching, teachers are making, make the classroom come alive. I'm sorry, trying to do this without my lesson. Project-based learning is student-centered education that involves a dynamic classroom approach in which it is believed that the students acquire deeper knowledge through their exploration of the topic. Students learn about the subject by working for an extended period of time, investigating and responding to questions, challenges, and problems. As a result, students develop a deeper content knowledge as well as critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and communication skills. At this time, I'd like to introduce two of my staff members from the middle school to explain how they view project-based learning and shall also show you an example. Mrs. Penali and Mrs. Frankburg, if you please come up.
Good evening, Ms. Penali. My name is Barbara Penali, and I teach eighth grade honors history. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Waylon for asking my students to present tonight. I tend to vary my different types of assessments. This is one version of them. In honor of Black History Month, my students created and played Black History Month Jeopardy. Although we talk about African-American contributions all year, I think it's important to highlight monthly groups in honor of the month that we celebrate them, that we talk about contributions all year that African-Americans have made, but we highlight monthly groups. Miss Frankburg helped to set up this project, so I'd like to turn it over to her so she can explain the logistics to you.
Thank you very much for having us. I'm actually going to speak from the computer because I want to show you some other examples of project-based learning that we've done throughout the course of the year.
So, Ms. Penali and I collaborate frequently on project-based learning topics, and we usually have some sort of digital output. For example, students created a digital book. They researched the process of electing a president and then created their own digital books with graphics and audio. That was one project. Another project, the students were to research the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, and they used a software called Genially. Usually when we do these projects, we just present the software to the students. We don't give a lot of direction, and they feel their way through it. We're like the guide on the side. And as we do these projects, we are teaching them about paraphrasing, avoiding plagiarism, different skills along the way. But here's an example of an interactive quiz that the kids made completely on their own in groups. So if the answer is correct, it moves on to an animation. If the answer is incorrect, it's a oops and try again. So for Black History Month, the students were given... We'll usually package the projects in something called a winglet where they're given all the resources that they need, the questions, the rubric, the link to the software. They'll download the software, share it, and then create their project. And in this case, it was Black History Jeopardy, and this is an example. The categories are African-American artists and entertainers, African-American inventors, African-American authors, the Underground Railroad, the Civil Rights Movement, African-Americans in the military. So they collaborated, researched, and created the game all on their own. So we'll have the students come up and explain their part in the process.
Hello, my name is Laila Rowland. For our Black History Month project, we picked groups of four and six to begin. We researched following topics: African-American authors, African-American artists and entertainers, African-American inventors, African-American in politics and the military, the Civil Rights Movement, and the Underground Railroad. We then had to decide what questions to fit into the categories between 100 and 500 points. We also paid the double jeopardy topic question and answer.
Hello, my name is Hamza Mohammed. I'm in honors history, and we're assessed in various different ways, through quizzes, tests, law, document-based essays, and projects. This was one of our favorite projects so far this year, and personally, my favorite project. It is important to study African-Americans and U.S. history because we need to learn and focus on their contributions. For a long time, those stories have been forgotten as part of our narrative. We study about not only those who have impacted our country, but African-American leaders and their accomplishments.
Hello, my name is Quentin O'Nathaway, and I will be your game announcer for our Black History Month Jeopardy. Before we begin, please break yourselves into four groups.
Okay, so we've made the rooms for you. So you'll notice that you have a colored buzzer for every third person. So Team One is blue, and that is... And I'm sorry if I got any of the names wrong or missed anyone. Mr. Boath, Mrs. Boyle, and Ms. Maleska, you're Team Blue, and you're number one.
And all the buzzers have a different sound.
So your noise is a boing. If you hit the blue, it will make a boing noise.
Let's hear it.
Okay, you can hit it.
Hit the button. Go ahead.
We've been hitting it.
It doesn't work? Okay. And, um, let's have Ms. Maleska, you'll be in charge of picking a dollar amount and a category when it comes to your team. Okay, Team Two is Mr. Panisi, uh, Mr. Roselli, and Mr. Cassio. And you are green, and your noise is a ding. Oh, and Mr. Farinella, you're on that team also.
I would have been on that team.
Okay. The orange team is a ding dong.
Sounds about right, doesn't it?
And that's, uh, Ms. Benati and Dr. Luchak.
We only get two?
We only get two because you're the most powerful.
What about the lawyer?
The purple team is, um, Mrs. Miller, Mr. Penner, and Mr. Giannakis, and you're supposed to call them.
And a paper in front of you with a pen, when we play double jeopardy, you will put your answer in. We're not going to go through the whole game because it's going to be too long. We're going to do a preview version, and we're going to hope to get everybody to sign the lines. We're hoping for all of the same.
All right. Who goes first?
Team One goes first. If they answer correctly, they go again. If not, if someone else answers correctly, they take over control of the board. If not, we'll just go one, two, three, four.
Just wait one minute.
Oh, as you've seen, the buzzer's on front of you. Well, you know the answer is present. Um, the first person to introduce the whole game will get the answer. I have one person on your team. You've designated a person to pick a topic and an amount. Please remember that our answer needs to be in the question. Are you ready to play Black History Month Jeopardy?
Yes, we are.
Let's begin.
Okay, Team One.
Oh, they said we are.
So we have African-American authors for 200, please.
This was Kelly's first call.
On being brought from Africa to America.
That's it. And what message have you gotten?
Do I get points for knowing the purpose of these?
No.
Can I show us the answers?
Team Two, go ahead, pick a category and an amount.
Authors for 500. This person got a behavior 95 in Oxford. Never completed encyclopedia on African diaspora.
No?
That's the top of the line.
Team Two still has control of the board.
Did you get it right?
No.
Nobody guessed.
Nobody guessed.
Oh, anybody else can guess.
Yeah. And also the buzzer.
Civil Rights Movement for 200.
These law committee seven day Black History, any color acted here.
What is Jim Grubbs?
What, anybody? Wait, we can still... No, Team Two, what, Team One?
So I have the...
You got a pen?
Oh, they just went zero because they were hanging out. Oh. African-American entertainers.
In the military?
Yeah. In the military for 400.
The Buffalo Soldiers were originally part of this cavalry.
Five. A U.S. cavalry?
And you didn't answer in the form of a question.
I don't watch games.
Sorry.
Who goes to three now, right?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the one we might have answered.
African-American artists and entertainers for 300.
She was given the nickname Lady Day, my friend's act, Lester.
Five.
Four. Three. Two.
Who was that with Cheryl?
Same, same category. 200. Same category.
All right, that's it. The influential photographer and artist named James Van Lersdyk opened his own talent studio in this decade.
What is the 1970s?
That's it.
At least two. We would have guessed the... Pick the 100? All right, we'll do African-American artists and entertainers for 100. Now, wait, hold on, nobody else gets to answer this, right? In the form of a question.
You just have to get it first.
We just need 100 once, and we will get it.
100?
Yeah.
In 1958, she became the first black woman to ever win a Grammy.
Five.
Diana Ross. Who is that? Who is Diana Ross?
I don't know, but we're just going to play double jeopardy. We have fun.
Okay.
That's what I'll tell you. Okay, we'll give you the topic, just write down your answers. Please, if you have any questions.
So, how much would you like to wager? You have a pen and a paper in front of you? Everyone has $500.
You guys writing with your amounts?
Yes.
Okay, we're making the question now, and then at the end of the double jeopardy song, you have to put the pens down.
African.
What's the question?
African Americans finally received equal voting rights in this year.
And Sam?
Boy didn't write any of the questions.
Delivered in automatic.
All right.
Did anybody get it right? No. Well, yeah. Let's get it through.
Um, let's start off with Team One, and they wagered all their highs and their lows. Um, they gave the answer, when was 1973? Um, Team Two wagered $499. Their answer was, when was 1964? Team Three, they wagered $499, and... Although it's nothing to say. And Team Four, they wagered $470, and their answer was, when was 1964? 2013. While the Voting Rights Act was passed many years ago, Andy Skates had found different loopholes within the law and within government. Too many unfair for black citizens were written in voting rights. It wasn't until 2013 when, and this was all kind of changing, and all these wonderful loopholes and secrets in life were finally, um, abolished, giving equal voting rights to black people in the world.
But so who won?
The overwatch! Your goal winners.
No, 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 you won. I think it was Team Four.
You both wagered $470.
So, I mean, just in a good respect, if the kids do come up with those questions and when they did the presentation in class, they didn't get to see the other students' questions. And when I went in to observe or go watch the lesson, the other students were getting these questions right. So I think that's a problem with this learning. Does show the kids are, you know, really beginning what they're doing and what they're learning. So we totally be nice to show tonight, and that is great job. Thank you.
That was fantastic. You know what I think that really speaks to? The, uh, the names that we've heard so often, uh, throughout our lives, and we really don't even know the history behind, uh, behind those names and the contributions and all of those things. So I think it's amazing that you put this together and the way that you're doing those projects. And all it says to us is some of the, some of the names and some of the things that we've taken for granted. Uh, 2013, I would have guessed that if you gave me 100 guesses, that it was 2013. So thank you, and thank you for, uh, the role that you do for our students, and thanks, uh, thanks to the students, you did an amazing job. Fantastic.
Great job.
We have another, uh, presentation. It's an amazing clip. It's something you're about to see is from Roosevelt School's Theater Week. The theater production was introduced to Roosevelt School thanks to, uh, the efforts of Anu Garrison, the district director of the S.R. Two Grant. Um, in this musical, the students performed was called The Rotten Princess. Over 120 students participated and loved the experience. Students rehearsed after school, Monday through Thursday, for two hours each day, and put on a final performance for their parents, teachers, and friends. Theater Week will definitely build, uh, the students' self-esteem and confidence. This wonderful program will continue in all of our elementary schools as well as Grant over the next few weeks. We're hoping to continue Theater Week for many years to come. So I hope that you enjoy the clip, and we're going to see this on the television screen.
Hi, everyone. My name is Angela McNulty, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Roosevelt Elementary. Two weeks ago, Tabitha's Productions came to our school thanks to Mrs. Anu Garrison. The musical the students performed was called The Rotten Princess, and we had over 120 students sign up. Students rehearsed after school, Monday through Thursday, for two hours each day, and had a musical performance the following Tuesday for their parents, teachers, and friends. Theater Week definitely built our students' self-esteem and confidence, especially after coming back from COVID. Mr. Michael's saying is, when you try your best, you can do anything. Throughout the week, students quickly realized that Mr. Michael was right. It's amazing to see what students were able to accomplish in just five days of rehearsal. Family and friends shared positive feedback, and the performance was engaging and fun. This was definitely a rewarding experience that students will remember for years. Dr. Goman and I would like to thank everyone for supporting us during Theater Week.
They hit a loud scream! And you're like, oh, come on! And you realize? That's all right!
We still have a number of schools that are going to be, uh, taking part in this program. So if you have the chance or you're invited to go see one of these musicals, please take advantage of it. Just a reminder to our parents and guardians, there's going to be an answer Zoom session scheduled for 6:00 p.m. on March 2nd. I'll be answering questions regarding any changes to the protocol for COVID-19. Keep in mind that we're still awaiting the guidance and the paperwork from the NJ DOE and the NJ DOJ. And anything that has to do with, uh, the changes in regards to, uh, protocol, and the vast option choice goes into effect for our district on March 7th. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, very good presentations. They, um, uh, it was amazing with what they did with, um, the first presentation with computer technology. I thought I was doing one of the PowerPoint, but now I have to go on again. Um, and Jeopardy, I felt like I was home watching Jeopardy. I had just not many right answers. But, uh, but it was a great job they did and great to see this, and just great to see all of it together after a couple of years of a lot of things stopping. It's just great seeing everything, what the kids are putting out, what they're learning. So I congratulate all of them again. Thank you. Um, okay, moving on to curriculum 1 to 4 and motion. Discussion. Roll call please. Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Penner?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mrs. Panisi?
Yes.
But I look at the policy personnel, items 11A through F.
So move.
Discussion. Roll call please. Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes. No on X, E. No on X by E.
Yeah, I apologize, it goes to P, not to F. Mrs. Farinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes, abstain on, um, 12C, number one.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Penner?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Finance 1 through 19.
So move.
Discussion. Roll call please. Mr. Boath?
Yes.
Mrs. Boyle?
Yes.
Mr. Farinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Penner?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Panisi?
Yes.
Under vote comments first. Vote comments on, on say, the term of school plan we have right now. Seeing none, any public comments on any item? Seeing none, public, uh, board member comments?
Hey, I just wanted to reiterate what, uh, Mr. Panisi said. That Jeopardy was really great. Like, when you go to the school and you learn, you really pull up the race up there, and you pay attention if you can. So something like that really engages you, and it really does, I think, help you learn more. I just think that was a fantastic way to have a lesson to learn. I felt that was great. Who looked at those kids up there too, with all this plays and all that acting? That's, it's really great to get them out in public, to, to get them away from that shyness that they have sometimes, open them up a little bit, so fantastic stuff. And I would be remiss enough to say how great this cafeteria looks right now. And, okay, Tom Cassio? Thank you, Mr. Wiggins.
Somebody get him a tissue.
Yeah, I just want to basically, uh, jump on what, uh, Pio and Jimmy said, um, about that deep-grade, uh, project learning. Um, that was absolutely wonderful. They're a fantastic way for kids to learn. It's a lot of fun, and how much it shows how creative our kids can really be. Um, I think this is, it was really a special presentation, and I thank everybody. I think this was really a special presentation, and I thank everybody at the middle school for all they did with that. And great job with the Roosevelt Theatre Kids. It looks like they had a lot of fun doing that. And I just want to wish Debbie Miller, one of our preschool parents, a healthy, enjoyable retirement. She's been with our district a long time. She's worked really well with those little ones, and she deserves a great retirement. Thank you.
Yes, congratulations to Debbie Miller on her retirement. And thank you to Mr. Tafaro for your outstanding work with a multitude of children in need. He was my guest speaker at the 2019 Unsummated Dinner. I'm glad to see that we will share in the cost of maintaining the turf field behind the panel due to the extent of use by our athletic teams. Thank you to Dr. Kevin Hidok for acknowledging the Board of Ed at the January meeting. Congratulations to World Language. I'm sorry we were unable to attend this evening due to the two meetings. Something we have done for years to support our honor society students. Thank you to all the counselors who work so closely with our students for National Counselors Week. Also, thank you to Mr. Whalen, Mrs. Penali, Mrs. Brandenburg, and our students. On your presentation of Black History, I was able to play this game on Zoom last year as a member of the Alliance. And it's a lot of fun, and it's challenging. Also, when there are school performances, could we please be notified so that we can attend, which we have done for many years? Thank you.
At this rate, I think I need to go back to A grade based on National Review. I just quit. But in all honesty, that was an amazing job to them and an amazing job to our staff for that Black History Month Jeopardy. Fantastic job to the students and staff for The Rotten Princess and Theater Week. And congratulations to our World Language students on being inducted into their respective honor society tonight. I remember being inducted in 2018, and that was an amazing... I'm sure it's an amazing event going on next summer. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, just to let the board and public know, hopefully, March 7th, if you ask me today, well, perhaps you ask me today, it's going to be optional. I'll be looking to move our board meetings back into the media center at that time. And hopefully, if everything moves well, that's planned. And we are going to have to have an executive session. There will be no action taken after it, just let the public know. There's all the possibility to act that the board meets in close session at this time to discuss confidential matters pertaining to personnel. Is that a motion? All bigger? All those? Okay, we're just coming out, just do adjourn after.